We're going to move on to item 7.6, consideration of resolution, further amending resolution number 2019-70 and 2019-162 to clarify the procedures used in the collection of taxes due pursuant to the Lake County Cannabis Cultivation Tax Ordinance. And Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Martinez, welcome back. Mike needs to be as close as possible.
Is that working now? All right. So Patrick Sullivan, Treasurer Tax Collector, I'm here to present the proposed resolution for the Lake County Cannabis Cultivation Tax Ordinance. The main point of this resolution is to essentially formalize what is already in place. Right now, Community Development, when they send out forms to cultivators, their initial paperwork is standing, need to return it by June 1st, and on that, they need to state the amount of cultivation or canopy area that they're using. What we'd like to do is formalize this process and put it in this resolution so that if someone does not complete this by June 1st, they will not be able to change their canopy area later. We've been extremely flexible over the last few years in working with people, so has Community Development, but we have had applicants and cultivators basically continue to push this deadline farther back. We had requests from people in December and January saying that they actually grew less the year before than they thought, and they wanted to adjust their bill. This really puts us in an impossible situation, and it puts Community Development in a difficult position as well, especially if an inspection could not have been performed. So what we're asking is that cultivators in June 1st, as they're already doing, that when they present that information, that they are actually locked in at that point so that they will not again be changing it. It has put us in a position of just trying to figure out whether someone grew, did grow less, and we don't necessarily have a great deal of documentation on that. We have satellite imagery and some other tools, inspection records at our disposal, but from our understanding, people would know in June whether or not they're going to be cultivating their whole area, or at least it's a reasonable expectation. So if they did not, if they do not file and declare that they're going to be growing less, our request is that then we would tax them at the maximum canopy area permitted by the use permit. So again, this is essentially the methodology we're already using, with the exception of this deadline has never been enforced. We have previously, as you'll note, made changes through resolution to the ordinance. That's been pursuant to, you know, the language that came out of Measure C. Just for clarity, that's all in the county code of ordinances. Section 18-56, that's where your board has had the authority to adopt policies and regulations or modify, repeal, or amend different sections of this ordinance in order to make for more efficient and effective enforcement and regulation. So that's what's happened so far. This resolution is just continuing on that string that's already discussed in here. So I'm happy to answer questions and provide any kind of clarity about what the situation is and why we're pursuing this option.
Thank you very much for your presentation on the item. Any comments, questions, board members? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a question. So you're relying on the growers' notification to a different department, Community Development, as whether they're going to be growing their full allotment under their use permit or some portion thereof. So far, so good, right?
Yes.
But CDD is not the tax collector, and all that's filed with CDD is either a reduction or a non-op notice. If they intend to cultivate the maximum area, they don't have to file any paperwork with you or CDD, right?
If no paperwork were to be filed, we would automatically assume the maximum canopy area, yes. They're still filing paperwork with CDD, but if it's not indicating less or not operating, we would impose the maximum under the use permit.
They would only file a CDD if they were seeking a reduction or an exemption, right?
In the past, perhaps, but, correct me if I'm wrong, the form CDD has is indicating the canopy size on it, right? Yeah, so everyone right now is filling out a form that is indicating what their size is.
And that form is currently due by June 1st to CDD?
Yes.
So whether it's a full grow, partial grow, or no grow, they're on the hook to file something with CDD?
As part of all their other documentation, the CDD. And just a reminder, tax, we never created an enforcement or field division for this program. We essentially, the county allocated additional funds to Community Development and Code Enforcement. That's why it's going to them, because we're not doing inspections. We don't have staff to do them. So just for clarity on why all this is part of CDD's process, it's because we don't have our own field division right now.
All right. And so although this is kind of restatement of existing policy, on that form, where the growers attest to CDD what they're doing this year, are they given ample notice that their failure to file this form or something timely will result in imposition of the maximum tax?
Yes. If you look back at the history of prior resolutions, part of the reason to do this one is that we used to define opt-out as essentially one process and reduction as another. And at one point, I believe one of them had a June 15th deadline. It started out June 1st, but then there was a grace period until June 15th. I believe opt-out originally started as July 1st, but changed to June or May. Yeah, so there've been different sets of dates, and each of those has corresponded to whether you're reducing or completely waiving off cultivation. So that was the other goal of this resolution, was to no longer distinguish between opting out and reducing and just call it what it is, declaring what amount you're using. Because I did think that could have been difficult for people to follow and perhaps could have led to a distinction of whether you had an extra 15 days or something like that in a given year.
And these notices, these statements that are filed with CDD, are they submitted by the perma-te, the landowner, some combination thereof? I'm wondering if people do come straggling late looking for tax relief, was there an ownership change on the property? Was it an applicant who should know better? Was it a landowner who got cut unawares because he's been picking up the tax bill for his operator? I'm just trying to make sure. It sounds like the thing is equitable, but if there's changing roles within the company or if the land has changed hands, I'm wondering how we would get that constructive notice of this tax liability to those new owners?
I mean, those are more unique scenarios. I think in the past, just, that's probably the reason we have been fairly lenient in working with people as the county as a whole, I think, with CDD and tax collector, especially when there are changes. We have people that didn't get their permit until July, for instance, so they would have already missed the June 1st deadline. I think if a permit actually went through a proper transfer in the middle of summer, in the middle of the season, maybe that's something we could look at on a case-by-case basis. But at this point, I think most people have established their method of operation. So barring some unusual circumstance where a company or an operator did change hands during the middle of the growing season, I don't really think anyone lacks the notice on this.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? So appreciate the conversation that we had. Just kind of reiterate some of those statements. I appreciate what you're attempting to do because it's got to be, I don't want to say a nightmare, but the amount of changes, last minute, I didn't know about the deadline, whatever it is. To me, this is kind of a, it's based on a tax. We all know that when we pay our property taxes, there's a specific date. When we pay our normal taxes, if you're on a quarterly, you have specific deadlines to meet. This is one of those tax-based deadlines. Let us know if you're planning to get anything less. I personally feel very uncomfortable if we end up taxing somebody the full amount when they didn't do the full amount, but at the same time, there should be some leverage to making sure that we get those comments or those statements prior to June 1st. So whether it's a fine for letting us know post-June 1st that you're doing less, that could be something we can look at, or paying what the cost is to make those changes happen in the first place. It takes up your time, it takes up CDD time, maybe some other departments are involved in that process of the reduction, the inspection, to ensure that that's truly what occurred. Whatever those things are, those should not be necessarily free of charge. You are utilizing public services here, and we're using public taxes in order to accomplish those services. So I feel very uncomfortable if somebody only did 2,000 square feet that we billed them to pay taxes on something they didn't do, such as 10,000 square feet. But at the same time, the opportunities to make those changes should meet specific deadlines or else there should be either a fee schedule for those changes or a fine if those changes were submitted after the fact of June 1st to ensure that you and your staff are not running around trying to figure out how to get these things rectified, especially as we are anticipating to get those revenues in January and in May, and these things only postpone those types of revenues, which only make our budgets kind of a little less dependable to know exactly what we should and are looking at. That's the way that I would look at it, because in my opinion, the way Measure C is written is not forcibly taxing based on a use permit. It's taxing based on an activity of cultivation. It says the taxes accrue upon legal cultivation, and so to me, the amount of square footage should be based on the activity, not based on the use permit. Just my opinion on where to go. And I think that we need a greater conversation of, is there interaction between prioritizing those that are saying, "We're changing our size" with the inspections that CDD is doing? Is the funding that we're giving through the equity grant, I believe it's through the equity grant for Code Enforcement?
Public health and safety.
Public health and safety grant, that's coming from cannabis taxes over at the state level. Thank you for the correction. Is that something that we can help with ensuring that this is also helped in this process of collecting the taxes and maximizing correctly what it is that we're taking in? But I don't agree if today, if we are saying that if we don't receive a piece of paper, we're going to tax you on something you may not be doing, I can't agree to that, but I can agree to a fine or to a cost of actual services.
I understand the point about a fine or a fee, because it certainly is an increased workload on our staff. Treasurer Tax Collector is hugely impacted by these late revisions and changes, as is CDD. So I think it could make sense to have that, but I don't think it resolves the underlying issue that if, if we were to follow that model where we allowed people to make this change later, as we have, I'm just afraid we run into that problem of how do we prove out what happened, especially, I mean, outdoor grows, we may be able to access satellite imagery, we may have inspection records that came during a certain portion of the year. But for mixed light and indoor, I don't know where that leaves us. At some point, I feel like the cultivator has to go on record declaring what they've done. Otherwise, that leaves us in a lurch later, because I'm not sure, in some cases, we may be able to readily prove it out, and that's part of the reason we've had some flexibility, because we've had satellite imagery, we've had an inspection report, we could tell, okay, it wasn't oversight, you didn't really cultivate that amount, we have an inspection that shows you did less, we have satellite imagery which backs that up, so it seemed reasonable to reduce it. I think the problem is, what are we going to do in the absence of that? And that's what this resolution is trying to target, that if we don't have inspections or we don't have satellite imagery, or if it's mixed light or indoor and we only have inspections from one piece of the year, if that cultivator's never committed on record to how much they're cultivating, I'm just not sure how we're ever going to resolve that. And I don't have an answer. I'm just, that's, that's why I came with this solution, because it just doesn't, it doesn't seem, in the absence of a much larger deployment of resources of staff and other capacity, without the cultivator committing to an amount by a certain deadline, I don't know how we'd do it.
So my question in return to you, which, again, we're kind of rehashing some of the conversation we had over the phone, is if a cultivator says, "You should not be taxing me this because this is not what I did," who has to show the proof of the burden, who has the burden of proof to show?
Well, at this time, we're placing on the cultivator to show otherwise. They've filed for a use permit, they've indicated that they intend to use a certain amount of canopy area with the county, and everything they've given to the county so far builds towards that. It's documenting that that's what they intend to do. And in fact, if they really were going to continually do less, that raises other planning issues, like, I mean, are they, if they're not going to cultivate repeatedly, are they abandoning that use permit? Are they, are they figuring other issues because they are not utilizing that permit in any means related to what their stated intent was? So I think that's a key distinction between cannabis businesses, like a dispensary, where, I mean, we're taking their return at face value. When a cannabis business, a dispensary or manufacturer, anyone like that is giving us a return, it's self-reported, it's kind of like transient occupancy tax, we're assuming that's right. We'll audit that. If we develop other information through different software or something else that leads us to question it, we'll investigate it further. But our, our starting point is that what they have filed, what they have declared to us, is true, and we're going to treat it as such. I think with cultivation, that key distinction is that they've already filed paperwork with the county. They have that use permit that's saying, "This is what we intend to do." So I feel like they've already told us what they intend to do, and if they're going to do something different, then it's, it really should be on them to tell us otherwise. At least, we don't have the resources to go out and prove it differently right now.
Supervisor Green?
Well, I think by June 1st, everyone has, is aware of what they're intending to do for the season, and so they can file this. If there's changes along the way, if something happens, you can lose your crop, like, there's a way to modify that throughout the season and then prove it out?
Well, that's actually what this is basically clamping down on, is that there wouldn't be that opportunity later to say, you know, XYZ things have happened and now we're not doing it. And that's part of the issue, we have a cultivation flat rate tax, not gross receipts. So it just, no, I mean, this would restrict that. Unless we were to modify this, there would not be a way later to undo that, which is what we've been doing. We've, we have been working with everyone.
Right. Yeah, and I don't like the, you know, changing the fee or having a penalty or sliding skills because, because sometimes people just lean on that because it's the easier and faster and cheaper thing to do. It's easier to beg forgiveness. So I, I do like this approach of having this done by June 1st, because you have your plans, you know what you're doing. I just, you know, if something catastrophic happens and the whole crop is lost, that's where I have an issue, a concern.
So if, essentially, I mean, hearing some of the concerns from the board, are you saying that perhaps having this set as the default but leaving open some door or through
Act of God?
Some sort of, if someone can truly document some sort of unusual scenario, much in the way that for property tax, we have a penalty waiver, but that typically involves, if you miss a deadline, you show, "I was in a car accident, I couldn't, you know, I couldn't leave the hospital," or "I was so sick, I was bedridden," and you have documentation to support that? That's, that's how we've done it, but simply changing your mind later?
Right.
Just because you decided not to wouldn't work? I mean, or is that the kind of standard we're looking at?
Right, because it's, it can be just easy enough where that becomes the default.
We could consider language that would leave some door open for more unusual, extreme changes, something to the effect where something happened beyond someone's control. I think some of the circumstances Supervisor Green brought up would, would be an example of some sort of unusual circumstance, like a complete ownership change in the middle of the season. We could try to craft language, probably lean on county council for some assistance there. If there's something that could leave that door open, would that satisfy concerns here?
Ownership change in the middle of the season, what do you mean by that?
So I, there's a few different things that could happen here, I think, is that perhaps if there's a change with the, in the ownership of the land, if one company were to leave in the middle and another company were to take over due to some sort of unexpected circumstance, I can't even really think of what it would be, but...
No, I know, but that's, that's what I bring up, because there is instances where it's a transactional deal to, for someone from a different area to come in, a business to come in and kind of take advantage and then put something in that says, oh, you know, they're going back and forth with if they want to submit in June or not, and there is entities out there that take advantage of the situation we're in as of right now. So for me, I'm fine with it the way it is, but if we all want to make different changes, I mean, I'll, I will entertain them, if you will.
Supervisor Simon?
I just want to speak on the issue of just getting the date set, you know, for the June 1st. I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with it the way it's presented today. There's always going to be issues, what if, what if, what if comes up, but we've had cultivators stand right here and say they're ordering the plants early March, April, right, you know, "We gotta, we gotta get these ordered from the nursery to get to us," to do those things. So they should know by this time right now, or even a little earlier than what we're talking about, by June 1st, of what's going to be happening this year. I understand the catastrophic incidents, but if it's going to be a large thing like that, probably something else happened in the county that would be at this board and we'd be having a conversation on it. So I'm good with moving forward the way it's proposed today with the June 1st deadline.
I think that, I think, I mean, I think there's ways to lose an entire crop and not have something affect the entire county. So that's, I still do have some concern there. And I don't know, it sounds like you have some policies or property taxes, like being in a car accident or something that can be documented, because that's going to require some additional time for an inspection to come in.
So I mean, in the past, I mean, you guys are aware that we've always worked with the cultivators, so I don't see that that would be an issue going forward. The thing with this June 1st date, you know, I've been here since the beginning, I was, I had to implement this program, and that has been the difficulty, is every time we send out the tax bill, we get all these calls saying they're wrong, right? And so if we do something like this and people file the paperwork that they need to file, and then there is a situation like this, I don't see why we couldn't come back to your board and say, "This has come up, this is something," you know, and work with it. You know, but for the most part, you know, if we can get a said date, it will definitely help us in making this process more efficient for our department, just because over the years, this has been the one thing I've had to deal with that has never been consistent, and it's always been the tax bills. You know, we, we try our best, you know, with what we have, but I think if we can have this date and then still be able to have that conversation later with, you know, certain circumstances, you know, we've always worked with them. You know, we've never been, I don't think our county's ever been really difficult with cultivators and said, "Absolutely not, we will not work with you." I really do not feel that's ever been the case with this.
Okay, thank you, Liz, I appreciate that.
And I know one example, I think it was the LNU fire that burned down a couple out in the Jerusalem Valley area, and I think that you guys worked with the operators out there and did something. I know the state also offered some funds. So I think catastrophic situations are going to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. So just wanted to bring out that example, that I've seen you guys do that kind of work to make sure it worked with the cultivators. I want to open it up for, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just, just I want to pick up on your comments. I do agree, the basic concept, I do believe Measure C links the cultivation activity, the actual cultivation, and that, on that basis is where the tax becomes due and payable. So the opt-outs, the reductions, all that, all that makes perfect sense to me. That said, Measure C didn't provide us in the appeal process and something like that. I think we have authority to craft one, but that's not before us today. So I want to acknowledge your comments. I totally agree. This one-and-done deadline, I think, probably is a reasonable approach for today, but just these what-if discussions, as Supervisor Simon was saying, there's enough of them and they're complex enough that just to keep our imposition of these taxes legally defensible and make sure we're only taxing cultivation that's actually happening, that's an important core concept. It is challenging because, again, it isn't up to the treasurer tax collector to inspect farms and make sure they're doing what they're saying. CDD has struggled in years past, they got most of their inspections, if not all the inspections done last year, but again, they're there to ensure compliance with the ordinance and the conditions of approval of the use permit, not to do math for another department. So it just highlights to me that we don't have a cannabis program per se that spans departments, and even our cannabis permit programs, such as it was under CDD, is kind of morphed with the removal of that managerial position. So I just want to acknowledge the difficulty of your job. I understand why you're bringing this forward, and I understand that CDD on their side also probably has some ongoing difficulties monitoring and managing what's going on on the ground any given growing season. But I think what before us is today is reasonable, and I think those longer discussions we can have another day with a different item.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? If you don't, actually, go for it, I already opened up public comment.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Hello there. Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors, staff. Nora Dalbaka, President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, and thanks for, as always, being a little proactive here for us. June 1st, generally cultivators will know by June 1 what they're planning to cultivate. The state has made some changes in the last year or two for folks looking to do reduction in their, in their, in their footprint or their cultivation area or their number of plants. Some of the things that can happen, though, that, you know, wouldn't be, wouldn't coincide with a, with a natural disaster in the area or something like that, we've got Hops Leighton virus that's going all, going around all over the state. You don't know that your crop or how much of your crop would have Hops Leighton virus until much later in the growing season, when the plants start to exhibit the symptoms of that, that particular disease. You could also have mold failure for, or testing failure for a crop, so that would be once you're harvested and you send it out for testing. That could happen from pesticide drift from an adjacent, an adjacent agricultural use that comes and taints your crop. All of those things may not be visible until they, they arrive at the, at the testing facility. So I do think that, I hope that we wouldn't have those kinds of things come up, because I hope for our cultivators that that wouldn't happen, but that is the kind of thing that could, that could fail a crop and, and/or a whole section of a crop. A way to track that, though, that would be something that would be reported to the California Track and Trace System, because that would also need to be reported to them, because the cannabis would need to be destroyed at that point. So that, I would love to have us come back and, if there are issues. And a way to potentially mitigate this would be something we've talked about for a long time, which I know requires a whole other policy side, which is to go to a gross receipts tax. And I see Patrick laughing because he knew I was going to say that. And that is, that would be all based and trackable and traceable in the Track and Trace System. You can see what people sold, how much was sold, and it would be verifiable under, under a state system that would be under penalty of breaking state law. So that, that is one way to look at that in the future, but I do understand the need for the, the need for the county to have a good number and for the understanding that the county is, is understaffed at the moment. And I think we've got some folks that are going to talk on Zoom as well, so I'm here if you've got other questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to pause on the public comment real quick. Didn't realize that our director from Community Development has her hand up, Maria Turner. Want to give you a chance to speak.
Thank you. The Community Development Department is in support of setting a deadline for opt-out and reduced canopy notifications. The June 1st date works out great, because it's just about when we're launching our annual compliance monitoring visits. And so we do use opt-out data or reduced canopy data, take that into consideration when we are doing our onsite visits. If somebody decides to opt out in their outdoor cultivation, we check that location via satellite and may not do a visit out there if there doesn't look like there's any activity. Though with mixed light and indoor, we will still do a site visit just to confirm that because we can't verify it through satellite. Yeah, so this timeline works fine with us. A change in ownership, which the board discussed earlier, is actually basically an administrative change. It doesn't have any repercussions on our side, though, Patrick, it may cause more staff time to make those updates on his side. So anyway, yeah, CDD thinks that it would actually be very helpful if we could know by June 1st what people are planning to do for that year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it back to public comment. Still in the chamber, is there anyone in the chamber that wishes to speak? in the chamber, is there anyone in the chamber that wishes to speak?
Michael Wagner, thank you. Board and Patrick, again, I absolutely understand Patrick's frustration with what goes on. And I think for all of us, as we've worked through all these different issues over however many years we've been doing this, we're kind of getting into the nits, like the, the small finite points that are important. I think Bruno and Mr. Green have made a very good point, which is the law itself, which was a voter initiative, is based on cultivation itself. So I think that the specific around the Cultivation Act is where we can enforce taxable. A gross receipts is not, again, even within that law or that construct. So based on what they cultivate is absolutely important for us to be able to collect those taxes and not have any kind of ramifications or issues. With that, setting a deadline for when that has to be notified or put forward is absolutely reasonable. That date of June 1st has been working relatively well for us. With that, having some way to amend that information, just like you were filing your income taxes, would seem reasonable as well. Not with staying some, you know, crazy catastrophe, like your crop burns down. The reality is, if you cultivate, you owe the tax, okay? Pesticides, it burns down. It doesn't really matter. If you cultivated that square footage, you were on the hook for that. Now, if you didn't cultivate it, then you're not. And I think that's an important distinction here. So having an amendment process or some way to modify it, we have talked about, well, you start in June and you know what you're going to do, right? Well, heck, I start at 9:00 AM and I think I know what I'm going to do, right? But by noon, my, you know, things happen. And, and the presumption that everybody runs on the same schedule, right? Especially in the cannabis arena, there's funding issues, you know? You expect to get money, let's say, from a sale to a distribution company, but that money doesn't come till July, right? I'm not saying that you shouldn't be able to at least put forward what you expect to do, but having some way to adjust that based on circumstances that are not necessarily life-threatening would, again, seem reasonable. This is about business and businesses have issues and, and changes happen. With that, I do think that what Patrick is asking for is absolutely reasonable. And with that, if we make a pathway to deal with the unknowns, I think that, again, now we're, you know, taking care of both sides of the scenario. With that, Patrick is talking about basically the ability to trust people when they write stuff down. And he wants some kind of, I think, culpability, you know, to hold people responsible for what they say. And while I understand what he's saying, I think that we already have those things in law. Defrauding the county is illegal no matter what. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I believe we have a hand up in Zoom. If we can unmute.
Hi, this is Erin McCarrick in Clearlake. Thanks for this, this proposal to allow farms to reduce canopy or opt-out if needed. I did have a question for Patrick. We spoke a couple months ago. I have a question and then a couple comments. But the question is, is if they, the Tax Department or CDD looked into when the state's deadline is to opt-out or reduce. Last year, as Nora mentioned, they changed some laws that allowed cultivation, cultivators to reduce their canopy or opt-out. So I'm just wondering if they found out what that deadline was and if it coincides, because that would be the easiest way to do it, to give cultivators one deadline. I'm not, personally, I don't know if this year's June 1st makes a lot of sense. It's March, it's March, it's May, it's May 14th. That is not a lot of time to get this information out to cultivators unless it's already gone out or they've been given some sort of heads up. Another communication, you know, there's issues in communication, so I would maybe, maybe table this for a bit. But especially when there's just been some confusion about tax and tax bills and equity credits and all that type of stuff. So maybe next year's a better year to implement it. And also giving examples of how things can change, I just, I talked to a cultivator who was renting and his rent just defaulted. And so he's freaking out, this person is freaking out because they're wondering if they can opt-out. So what if that happens in July? I guess just being clear about the extenuating circumstances. The state also has disaster relief ability that allows cultivators to file for disaster relief. So if there's any way to coincide with the state, that's always the best, as the CDD knows, as they're creating the cannabis ordinance that is trying to align with the state. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Supervisors. Thank you, Chair Sabatier. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Just a clarification. Don't we already have a deadline currently in place? This is not a new deadline?
That's, that's correct. We have previously used this June deadline and...
You're just saying, "We're serious this time."
That's, that was the intent with this, is that we're actually going to do what we formerly said we were going to do, which was to hold people to it. To the point about the state process, we did look at that. It just, the state licensing process seems so different. And we've changed our dates. We've changed our ordinance a lot. We've changed it so many times. I couldn't really figure out a way to marry them up and try to mirror the state's schedule. So I thought that was a really good idea, just in practicality. It's, at least as we're structured right now, it didn't seem viable. And I would just note, I mean, hearing, hearing everything that's been said, I, this ordinance does not currently have an appeals procedure. I think maybe there's value in having something like that, so that there is that opportunity to provide additional documentation if there is some sort of unusual circumstance. So just throwing that out there. I mean, we're happy to work on that and bring that back regardless of whatever decision the board reaches today on this proposal.
Thank you very much. We have another hand up. Oh, it's still airing. Okay. Did you have something more to say? Okay. Thank you. So let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Green?
Question for Director Turner, if she's still with us.
Yes, she is.
The, I don't know what the form is titled, but it serves two purposes. One is to notify CDD of the footprint and what inspectors are going to see when they go out to the farm. The secondary purpose, and the one we're talking about here today, is to provide notice to the treasurer tax collector, the area, taxable area that is being cultivated this year. On that form, you know, who signs it? The owner, the landowner? Is it signed under penalty of perjury? Is there tax notice language on there that makes clear that this form is a twofer? It's not only required for compliance with Article 27, but it's also required for compliance and calculation of cultivation tax due. And maybe if it's not super clear on that, maybe one takeaway from today would be kind of a meet and confer about the, the form of that form, to make sure that when they sign it, we're not kidding, we're locking it in. And by the way, here's your, here's your site to this resolution we're going to pass, and here's your site to Article 27. And it's very crystal clear that this is not just a compliance document for CDD, but it's a compliance document for the treasurer tax collector.
We'd be happy to do a meet and confer to sharpen up any language that's necessary for those forms. They've been used more as a departmental policy rather than something that was set out in Article 27. And so we're looking for the permatee's signature as the owner of that permit to, to attest to a reduced canopy or an opting out. But we're happy to work with, with Patrick's office to make that a little more clear going forward, particularly if the board supports a resolution that tends to more formalize this process.
And then if you don't get a form back for whatever reason, is there a internal process to follow up with a letter, a certified letter, any type of contact regime going on within CDD, so that if we're not getting these forms timely, we're not just going to sit waiting for the grower to come in panicking, "Oh, I didn't know"? Because again, we're going to...
No, we don't really chase after them to turn in the forms. We kind of leave it to them as business owners to let us know if they are cultivating other than their approved use permit.
All right. Thank you.
But then when we do get that information, again, we use that as reference when we go out to verify our compliance monitoring site visits.
Do you have an estimate of just how good compliance is generally of our permatees? How many, how many are timely filing? And again, nothing, nothing needs to get filed if they're...
Supervisor, Supervisor Green, I asked a similar question. About half of them submit late filings, is what I got from Mr. Sullivan.
No, my, my reference was, I think, two reductions.
Oh, that half of them do reductions. Gotcha.
It appeared to us that approximately half the bills were being adjusted. But I can't speak to how many of those forms were filed timely or not.
Gotcha. Apologize.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have that information offhand. But I'd be happy to text my staff and let you know.
I'm definitely in favor of moving this resolution today, but it does sound like there's some follow-up, follow-up work that could be done departmentally to clarify the notice to the growers. And as far as appeals and stuff like that, that's a longer-term discussion we can have later.
We could also set up an annual notification, say, in February, just reminding people. And I think we have done that on a small scale informally, just reminding people that you're opt-out or your reduced canopy will be due by June 1st.
Okay. Thank you for those questions. And just to reiterate, this is a use permit, not a mandate, to take on certain activities. If we had a similar situation with, say, a dispensary, just to at least try to do an apples-to-apples, because there is really no other apple out there to compare this to, that this is part of our problem throughout the state, as we see different agencies trying to navigate through this system as well, or different counties trying to navigate through this tax system as well. But if we have a use permit for a dispensary and they went on their use permit, say, they'd be open Monday through Fridays, we don't tax them if they decide to only be open on Mondays. We only tax them on the activities that happen within their, their, their transactions, which obviously is where this is not an apple-to-apple, because this is based on an actual tax, sales tax, not a, a square footage tax. But if somebody decides that this year they're, they're late, maybe their supply chain created an issue where they couldn't do anything, the inability to change it after June 1st and taxing somebody on an activity that we have no right to mandate that they do, is where I just struggle, that we are taxing somebody in a way that just does not seem appropriate, which is where I would prefer to head towards a fine or a penalty for late filing and changes to ensure that we are taxing appropriately and trying to keep you whole in your department, because I just see no other way to do this the right, the correct way. Because we can't mandate somebody to do specific type of work. Their use permit is a permit to be allowed to do the work. But as far as the level of work that they do and how it changes throughout the year, should, we should be able to find a way to do this. And the elephant in the room was brought up about gross receipts, definitely another elephant to try to take one bite out at a time, to try to make that happen. But that would solve so many of the problems, both in the how much to tax them and what are you doing this year? It would be based on actual transactions. So I think that this is complicated. There's no easy way to go through it. But I just wanted to express and explain again why today I will be voting no on this, just because I feel very uncomfortable about taxing anybody, no matter what, for things that should not be taxed. Looking for action?
I'll for the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay. All right. Thank you very much.